I'd like to call over the committee of the whole meeting, the Village North Aurora on Monday, December 7th, 2020. Roll call, please. Mayor Berman? Here. Trustee Carroll?
Here.
Trustee Curtis?
Here.
Trustee Capuano?
Here.
Trustee Gately?
Here.
Trustee Lowry?
Here.
And trustee Martinez?
Here.
You know, I failed to mention that December 7th, 201941, that infamous day, I know none of you were here around to remember it, but I didn't. Audience comments, audience comments are going to come after our discussion of each of the items. And so we're going to have a presentation in each case, and when that's completed, then we'll have audience comments after that. And our audience comments will be limited to three minutes. What I really like is if you're going to say the same thing as the person before you or someone else, it really is just wasting time to hear you say the same thing. We know you're all here because of your interest in what's going on, but there's no reason for anyone to repeat what's happening or what's going on. So if we try to do that, appreciate it very much. Any trustee comments? Well, Steve, do you want to lead the discussion on?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As everybody knows, there's two items on the COW agenda tonight, the Committee of the Whole Agenda, regarding Moose Lake Estates. We had a tremendous turnout of residents at the public hearing at the last meeting, and the board subsequently moved the discussion back to the Committee of the Whole on both items. So that's why we're here tonight. The staff has continued communicating with the HOA, letting them know, making sure that they were aware of the meeting tonight, which is obvious by the number of participants we have on the call. As a reminder, for those in attendance, this is at the Committee of the Whole level, no formal voting is taken on the items. This is an opportunity for the village board to discuss the items and to hear comments again from the public. Both items on the agenda are distinctly different, even though they both relate to Moose Lake Estates, which is why we have them listed separately. And we want to make sure to give the board and the public the best opportunity to make comments during the comment period. We are going to start by having the village attorney give a history overview of the subdivision and what is actually being discussed tonight on both items. And then individually, our community development director will introduce each item for the board to discuss. With that, I would turn this over to village attorney Kevin Trundle.
Thank you, Steve. Can you hear me good?
Yes.
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 Are you able to see the correct presentation?
I see a presentation.
Thank you.
Yep. So we'll go back to the beginning and bring us up to where we are currently. The original annexation agreement was approved in 2003. It incorporated a preliminary plat, a preliminary plan, which was incorporated as part of the zoning, which was E3 residential or estate PUD. And there were subdivision deviations and zoning deviations incorporated as part of the PUD. Next slide, please. The 1990 zoning code is what applied at the time. Planned unit developments, which is abbreviated PUD, were not required for single-family projects under single ownership in 1990 or 2003, and actually not even under our current 2013 code. The zoning code provisions that guide the process of establishing a planned unit development that provide purpose and standards, those are all laid out in the code. Those are the standards that guide the process of review and the decision-making. Once a planned unit development is approved, that is the zoning rules that apply. I'm sorry, I wasn't quite done yet. There we go. The, once a PUD ordinance and plan are approved, they apply to that development uniquely. And to the extent that there are silences in the particular details of the PUD plan, the underlying zoning provisions apply. All right, next slide. So the preliminary plat that was approved in 2003 is here. And basically, the plat lays out the lots, the parameters of the lots, and the streets, and easements, and things like that. So those are all laid out on the preliminary plat for the entire subdivision, including units 1, 2, and 3. Next slide, please. The preliminary plan includes those same lots with more detail. And the preliminary plan becomes part of the PUD. And it includes other detail like street and landscaping and other details like that. Sometimes a preliminary plan would include a lot of other drawings as well, but the plant, the Moose Lake PUD just included this preliminary plan document. Next slide. A planned unit development, again, is, well, it's a species of special use. And it isn't required now, and it wasn't required then, for single-family developments under one owner. It was, it's required under our current zoning code, where there are two or more owners for property that's going to be developed as a unit. And for any commercial property and multifamily property that's over 2 acres in size. But at the time, Moose Lake wanted to be creative with their development, and so they requested the planned unit development. And specifically, they requested it because they wanted some deviations in the subdivision code that would apply, as well as to the underlying zoning, to allow for staggered houses with variation in setbacks and other things. And the slide that you're looking at indicates the four deviations from the subdivision code and the three deviations from zoning. So it's important to note at this point that the original PUD did not incorporate architectural design standards, it did not incorporate building elevations, and it did not establish minimum house size.
Hey Kevin, can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Um, does that mean that the PUD was silent in those? Or it specifically stated there are no building elevations, no minimum house sizes, or?
Good question mark. It's silent. It does not address those things.
Then does the underlying zoning code have any requirements?
The underlying zoning code, which would be the E3 residential or estate zoning, which may have been slightly different at the time, but is similar to what we have in place now, also did not incorporate design standards or building elevations. There are no design standards or building elevations required for single-family developments as a whole, although the planned unit development process does allow the board to impose them.
Okay.
There's also no minimum house size restrictions in any zoning category that I'm aware of. There's none in the residential for sure, and definitely not in E3.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide. So this kind of gets to your question. E3 zoning is transition zoning from less dense to more dense. And really, the way that E3 zoning does that is by focusing on lot size as well as setbacks. Again, the zoning code does not impose design standards on single-family residential. They could be imposed through the PUD process, but typically, they aren't. The E3 zoning focuses on lot width and area, building setbacks, maximum building heights. But again, there is no minimum building size requirement in E3 or any of the other zoning categories either. Next slide. So nobody envisioned in 2003 what was going to come in five years with the beginning of the recession. And as the, as we started to head into the real sluggish real estate market, Gladstone came back to the village because they were required at that time to have concluded all of the public sidewalks for the subdivision, I'm sorry, all the public improvements for the subdivision. And of course, Unit 3 wasn't built out, and Units 1 and 2 weren't completely built out. So they were asking for some relief from the requirement to complete all those things. Among other things, if the sidewalks had been built and the parkway trees had been built on all those lots that weren't completed, they probably, they were likely to be damaged in the, in future development. So the village agreed to extend for three years the requirement of completing those public improvements. Next slide. Again, three years later, 2011, not much had changed, and the economy was even worse. So Gladstone came back, and as I recall, I think we probably talked with them over a period of nine months, trying to find a way to move forward. And what ended up happening is that we agreed to suspend their requirement to build out those public improvements, but that suspension of their obligation was conditioned on vacating the plat. Part of the reason for that is that once a plat is approved, the ordinances provide a certain amount of time in which the development is to be built out, including the public improvements. So the plat was vacated with the idea that rerecording the plat would trigger the obligation to complete those improvements that had been suspended. And of course, we also required Gladstone to grade over and smooth out the top soil over Unit 3 and plant it, so there wasn't a big bare spot in the middle of the subdivision and, and the erosion, there would be erosion control. Next slide, please. So that brings us to today. What we have before us are two requests. First is a request to approve the plat for rerecording. And MI Homes, who has submitted the quest, the request, is not asking for any changes. There are a couple of changes, but only changes that have been requested by the village engineer, which includes, I believe, a couple of expanded easements on two lots. Other than that, they're basically simply asking for us to approve for rerecording the plat that was vacated and anticipated to be rerecorded in 2011. The amendment to the annexation agreement is the other request that MI Homes is making. It's important to note that they have not asked for any zoning changes. They haven't asked for any change to the PUD or plan. They're not asking for changes to engineering. They're seeking primarily to confirm the obligations that already exist, and they have added one request, which is for a lock in the building permit fees for five years. Next slide, please. Going back to the plat, which is the first of the two decisions for the board to make. Again, it's, it's identical in all respects, except for a couple of changes, and those are the changes that the village has requested. Otherwise, there are no changes to the lot size or width, or to any of the dimensions of the originally platted parcels. And of course, it meets E3 district requirements now, as it did then. Next slide, please. This is the actual Unit 3 plat, and you can see that Unit 3 is called out in the middle, in the highlighted area. Those are the lots that comprise Unit 3. This is what they're asking to be rerecorded. And it's basically the preliminary plat, just like the final plat, in accordance with the preliminary plat. Next slide, please. The developer has taken the position that the village has no discretion to refuse to approve the plat for rerecording. And the reasons the developer has expressed for that is that it does not deviate, deviate except for the technical changes that the village has requested. And the Second Amendment, which is part of the annexation agreement that governs the property, anticipates that the plat would be rerecorded and would trigger the obligation to complete the sidewalks and trees in Unit 3. Again, the zoning that's in place for this development is the zoning that was approved pursuant to the annexation agreement that was incorporated into it, which includes the few deviations from the subdivision ordinance, the three deviations from the zoning ordinance, and the plan, which has some more detail than the plat does. The developer is not asking for any other changes, and that becomes an important, important element of what the board has to review this evening. The, the board does not have the unilateral right to open the zoning for the property, because the zoning for the property has been established by previous actions in the existing code, and the developer has not asked us to reopen it and has not asked us for any zoning changes. Next slide, please. The Third Amendment to the annexation agreement itself, most of it details the rights and obligations that already exist. When MI Homes first came to us, they, they actually first approached us seeking simply to confirm all of the engineering, the public improvement issues that, that might be left over, including, we noted to them some punch list items from Units 1 and 2, as well as obviously the need to regrade Unit 3 to the specifications that have already been approved, and build out the sidewalks and parkway trees. It confirms that there's no outstanding recapture obligations. It confirms the setback requirements. It confirms stormwater control facilities. And the only thing that MI Homes has really asked for in the annexation agreement is the five-year lock on building permit fees. MI Homes has also agreed, as part of the amendment to the annexation agreement, to include some prohibitions on singles-story homes and homes less than 1,900 square feet. So if the annexation agreement gets approved, it would come with those added provisions. Next slide, please. As far as the annexation agreement is concerned, the village has no obligation to approve it. It's a matter of pure contract. The village doesn't have an obligation to approve it, and MI Homes doesn't have a right to demand that we approve it. If we don't approve the amendment to the annexation agreement, at the end of this year, the current owner will be in default on the requirement to complete the sidewalks and parkway trees in Units 1 and 2. Nothing will change with Unit 3. The village will be responsible for whatever punch list items are left in Units 1 and 2, because we've already accepted those improvements. There will be no building permit fee lock going forward, and the few concessions that MI Homes has offered will not apply. Next slide, please. Again, I think there's been some misunderstanding about how the standards and purpose of the planned unit developments in our code apply. Our current code was adopted in 2013. Obviously, it wasn't the code in existence at the time that the annexation agreement was approved, though the PUD provisions are not all that different. They are somewhat different. But if you read through those provisions, if you read through the purpose and the standards, you'll see that they're prospective in application. For instance, the very first of those standards is a statement that any property of 2 acres or more that is commercial or multifamily has to go through the PUD process, and any property that's owned by two or more owners. Obviously, that's looking forward. It's not looking back in time. And the rest of the standards in the PUD provisions of the code are the same way. They guide the review process, they guide the decision-making, they set the parameters in which the, the village can create a planned unit development. When a PUD ordinance and plan get approved, they control going forward, and they control everything that is expressly stated in them. And again, to the extent that a PUD or plan is silent, the default rules are the rules of the underlying zoning. So that's where we are today. We have two things in front of us. We have the plat, and we have the annexation agreement. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Toth.
Thanks, Kevin. Nice job with the explanation. Moose Lake, Units 1, 2, and 3, the subdivision comprises of 250 lots. As Slide 12, it indicated that the Unit 3 lot is centrally located and contains 36 lots. When the plat was submitted, the first thing we do is check the underlying zoning in the E3 for a lot width, which would be 80 feet, and lot area, which would be 14,000 square feet, which was all confirmed for Unit 3. In your packet, you will see that we have the previously approved Unit 3 plat and the preliminary plat, and what is being proposed, and they are identical. And as Kevin had mentioned earlier, the difference in some of the plat language and requirements are just easements that we've requested, aligning some of the actual easements with some of the underlying infrastructure that's in Unit 3 currently. So again, we verified everything at that point. Now, the way we see it now is MI Homes could build currently under Units 1 and 2. Under the current standard, if they were to build single-family homes per the E3 district standards and bulk regulations, given the setbacks in the PUD, and given every bulk requirement of the underlying E3 district, they would need the plat approval to build in Unit 3. So that's kind of where we're leaving off right now. Thank you, and here to answer any questions you might have. But that is some of the additional information I wanted to add regarding the plat approval.
All right. All right. Is there any trustees like to make any comments now, or we will open it up for, for discussion by?
I have a question. Mike, if we do not grant approval, does that mean the lots are unbuildable for this developer or any builder going forward, or they still have the right to proceed, but we lose the protections of the two-story and the 1,900 square feet?
Well, that would be, that would be under the annexation agreement. So the annexation agreement, I was gonna probably parse them off and reintroduce the annexation agreement. But yeah, for Unit 3, the plat would set forth the lot requirements. So they're not asking for any additional lots. They're asking for the same number of lots and the same number of lot sizes and widths that were approved originally. Someone else could come in in the future and ask for multifamily development, smaller lot sizes. But as it sits right now, they're asking to come in and duplicate what was originally approved under the original plat.
I don't think you answered the question.
They, they wouldn't be able to do that, though, without opening the zoning. Is that correct?
I think trustee Curtis was asking if we, you know, if we don't do anything, are they able to build? And the answer to that is yes.
And yes, in Units 1 and 2, not in Unit 3, with, if the plat is not approved.
Right.
And I have a question for Kevin. Kevin, you mentioned that the, the developer takes the position that we, as a board, have no discretion to deny their request for plat. Do we?
Well, that's a good question, Mark. You know, to give you one answer, to push it out to the extreme, if, if this development sat the way it is, unchanged, and 50 years from now, someone came in and said, hey, we want to rerecord this plat and build out this development, I would have to say that because of the passage of time, we would have some discretion to exercise. The question becomes, given that eight years have passed, you know, does that same kind of thought process apply? And then along with that, I would ask, on, on what basis would we deny it? I would also add that the property is under the, the terms of an existing annexation agreement. Annexation agreements last for 20 years. So they don't last indefinitely. And I just go back to the question, on, on what basis would we deny it? Especially if they're providing the same document, and we have an amendment that anticipates it would be rerecorded. I'm not expressing a legal opinion at this point. I don't think I'm willing to do that, but I just throw that out.
Well, definitely, definitely.
I'd like to respond to that, Kevin. The basis for denying it would be the very clear and comprehensive complaining of all the citizens that live there, who also elect us as trustees. They put their trust in us to make decisions on their behalf. And my heart goes out to them. I have sympathy for them in terms of the property values that they're imposed upon. And that's what I think is, is a very good basis for us questioning whether we should move forward or not. If we don't approve it, at least we'll do maintain control over plat 3. So.
Right. And your, your concerns for the residents are extremely well-taken. The, the problem is that the, the plating process is a subdivision process. It's not zoning. And they haven't asked us to open up zoning. If, if they had asked us for zoning changes, we, it would all be fair game for us to raise issues in regard to the planned unit development if they had asked us to open it up. I don't see that we have the authority legally to unilaterally open up the zoning provisions and add new requirements. And that's.
Okay. I was having a question. So if, if a period of time was to pass and things were to change, even though it's not stated, you said that we could perhaps open it up to us to re-vote on those. I, I think, what determines that period of time, you know? And it, it also, just like Mike Lowry, trustee Lowry, you know, you have 200 sites that currently develop, and you have 100 of those, probably homeowners in this meeting expressing concerns over the development. So it's, to me, it's pretty clear that there is some sort of concern as far as what's being built in and, and not matching up. So is there a determination at that time, or, or we just go through it and figure things have changed, and we may have to vote in this or not?
I'm not sure exactly what the question is.
When, when, when you said that when some time has passed, you know, let's say 10, 15 years, 15 years, and things have changed, right? That they may actually re-question whether we have to reopen this for the board to approval or not, right? I mean, obviously, the 15 years have not passed, but eight have passed. But in those eight years, the, the changes that they're requesting on the subdivision are dramatic compared to what they were eight years ago. So how do you determine whether we have or not the chance to reopen it to the board?
Well, I, I think I understand. I, I was kind of speaking theoretically with that 50 years, and I think making the point that, that there, I think there is some scenario under. I think there is some scenario under which the board would have some discretion to refuse to approve a plat, even one that had previously been approved. I'm not expressing an opinion as to what those circumstances might be. The question is, is there anything that's changed in the meantime, in these last eight years, that would warrant refusing to re to approve it for re-recording? I'm not expressing actually. I mean, I don't know. Theoretically, there might be. The problem is that the rules that apply out there are established. They're established in the zoning and PUD plan that was approved by annexation agreement. And to the extent that it they aren't addressed or something isn't addressed in those things that were approved, they're set in the E3 zoning provisions. And anybody could come in tomorrow and pull a building permit on any lot in unit one and two and build a single-family home on those lots as long as they complied with the rules that are in place.
And the regulations of the subdivision association don't weigh in on this?
Well, yes, all of those lots are subject to covenants. But those covenants are a private matter that run with the land. They were they were addressed. They were created originally by the developer. And now there's a homeowners association in place. And theoretically, the association could exercise some authority by changing those covenants to require things like architectural review and so on. And a lot of subdivision covenants have those things. But those are private. We we required them to have covenants, but only for the purpose of making sure that they were maintaining open spaces and the water retention and so on. We didn't dictate to them what their covenants should include. And we don't, you know, we don't have the ability to enforce their covenants because they're private, you know, matter between landowners.
Kevin, not to interrupt, but would the HOA now be able to go back and incorporate, you know, facade requirements and minimum square footage requirements? Would they be able to now establish some sort of guidelines for future developments?
Theoretically, they could. I don't know.
That shouldn't we we as a board have no control over what the HOA could do.
Right.
Would it be safe to say that the HOA tomorrow could hold a meeting, you know, come up with some new minimum standards? And then the builder would have to respect those guidelines? Should we approve the plat?
Well, that's all a matter of how those covenants read and what the status of those covenants are and the and the authority that the HOA has. You know, I certainly wouldn't weigh in on those things, but theoretically, as a general proposition, the answer to that is yes.
Because it seems like right now, by us approving this plat, we are giving the homeowner some safety should they decide to incorporate some minimum property standards, knowing that the zoning hasn't been reopened, that the integrity of the lot sizes and the number of lots would remain intact. Is that correct?
Right. We we control the zoning, which is established. And it's established pursuant to the annexation agreement, which means that people have rights to expect that we will uphold and honor what's in place.
I guess what I'm saying is I'm just trying to see if there's something we can do to buy some time so that the HOA can regroup. Or would it just be better to go ahead and approve the plat and put it back into the HOA's hands and say, look, this is, you know, you guys do have some some redress to the situation as far as minimum property standards by incorporating it into the HOA declaration?
When does the HOA have the power to do that? Initially, when the HOA is set up, developer is the one that has the power and the control over it. At what point in time does he turn that over to the HOA?
It depends on the agreement.
Right. There's statutes that govern it. I believe that once a development is built out to a certain percentage, the HOA has to turn it over. And my understanding is there may be a time element to that as well. But again, that's kind of a matter of statute as well as how the covenants read.
So HOA would have to be.
Mike Toth, I would like to, how many total lots are we talking about?
68. Yeah, 68 between units one, two, and three.
And what about in just three? How many lots are there?
It would be 36.
Okay, so that's a little over half the lots. We still have some control over, is that correct?
No.
No?
Just through the zoning and what's existing through the PUD.
So if we vote on that plat, the first item, you know, at the next meeting, they can sort of up one and two, but where does that go then with that? Unit three, if we vote no, Kevin?
Well, I guess the ball is in their court. And I couldn't predict what they would do. They've already taken the position that we don't have discretion to to refuse it. I would be speculating to say where that goes.
So I mean, they couldn't build on it at that time. That would stop that section.
Yeah, but they could also sue us.
Right.
Or for by for for denying it arbitrarily and capriciously and take us to court. And I don't think that that's something we really want to defend.
Well, I guess difficult to defend that.
I have a question for Kevin. And it's in regards to the zoning ordinance in section 5.1 and section 5-4. Does that apply here?
It doesn't apply at this point because the PUD is already approved. And and so it's established for this particular development. Those provisions, if if they were coming in and said, hey, we want to amend the PUD and make some changes, we could we could go through those factors, which are standards that apply in developing a PUD. Or if somebody came in with an application and said, we would like to develop this property as a PUD, those are the the factors that we can address in creating a PUD. But they don't apply retroactively. In other words, you know, if if they did, every time, you know, someone came in to pull a building permit, we could, you know, open it up and say, well, you know, we don't think you can build that kind of a building here. Or or the other way around, you know, they could say, well, we'd like to, you know, deviate further from the provisions that exist. So, you know, it doesn't apply in that factor. It applies prospectively when we're creating a plan. And once the plan is created, then that is the plan for that subdivision.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any compromise that perhaps the staff could work out with the builder in terms of at least the aesthetic appearance of the buildings themselves? Perhaps some more hit roofs or brick facade or something like that?
We had the discussion with them. We had the discussion with them already. I think that they're making some concessions. They're willing to make some concessions, but you know, on the 22 lots in one and two. Nothing in unit three.
So what are the concessions that are making in unit one, two?
Well, they said no single, no one level next to an existing home. And we're talking nothing less than 20 or 19,000 square feet.
1,900.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's basically their bottom two models with regard to size could not be built adjacent to existing homes.
If I would help out the village board for further discussion. If you want, Mike can give, we're kind of blending into the annexation agreement amendment right now. So Mike can give you a two-minute overview of why that's separate from the plat. That's what you're talking about is a negotiation that takes place during the annexation process.
Hey, Steve, are we limited? I mean, do we have a certain timeframe that we need to grant this approval by? Because what I what I would almost like to do is maybe table this and let the HOA, you know, through their council, look into what options they have as far as, you know, including some minimum property standards within the HOA or the PUD.
Sure, we have, obviously, the request of the developer is to go through a process, but we are the village and we can choose how our attorney guides us through that and what our options are. And as of right now, we brought it back to the county meeting as the board directed. And the county meeting is great because it gives us opportunity to take a look at where the board's at and have Kevin tell us legally where we can or can't go in the process. And if he tells us that he's comfortable with us reviewing this further, then that would be something we can do.
You know, bottom line, you know, we need to protect the interests of our residents. We need to, you know, protect the conformity of our neighborhoods. You know, our housing stock is one of our best assets that we have. And I just think that we need to take a step back here. Let the PUD and the HOA, or let the HOA, you know, see what they can do and see what remedies they have on their end and you know, proceed from there. Because, you know, speaking as a real estate professional, I do think that there would be a real impact to value when you, you know, you drive through the, for example, the Muridore subdivision. And it's a mixed bag and it's just, it doesn't doesn't make for an appealing, you know.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood. So that would be my opinion is if we can just give the HOA a chance to amend their articles and see what they can do to protect themselves and protect, you know, to protect our village, our housing stock. I don't want to rush through this if we don't need to.
I'm in support of that. If that's at all possible, I'd go, I'd prefer to do that and see what they can do with from their end.
Mike.
If that's possible, do, I'm saying, you know.
Does the developer, the buyer have a deadline?
Yeah, I've been told the buyer is looking to close by the end of this year. You recall this, items already gone to committee in October, November, and now we're in December again. And not to put words in women's mouths, I did, I have heard at some point, and maybe someone from the public can address this, that they have reached out and had discussions regarding their rights and abilities to impose additional bylaws in their through their subdivision. So I'm not sure if they've exercised that already or have tried in the past.
Yeah, I don't know either, but I thought one of the emails sent to me at the village indicated that the HOA made some stipulations and the builder wasn't in agreement. As I might be wrong on that, but I thought I saw that in one of the emails.
Yeah, this might be a good segue into the annexation agreement, Steve, if you think this is a good time. You know, Kevin went into a lot of detail. Basically, the crux of it is, is they're basically taking a snapshot. MI Homes is taking a snapshot of their obligations with the village. Meaning that they want to know their obligations they were coming to develop. And those standards were engineering, you know, punch list items, surety requirements, you know, for finishing Prairie Ridge, Coyle Street, and then taking on that infrastructure and basically introducing more landscaping into the actual HOA and the subdivision itself. They're not required to do this. They're not required to go forward with the annexation agreement. You know, some of the items that they're requesting there, again, are just basically memorializing or just reaffirming. A lot of it's already been approved. You know, the two items that are, you know, out for discussion is the building fee permit lock for five years. Basically, they're saying there's a build-out schedule of four to five years. They just want to know what their anticipated costs are with those with those building permit fees. We have not raised those fees in some time, and I don't see a fee raised on the horizon. So it might not have any bearing on how they want to proceed. They could proceed without the building permit fee lock. But that just gives them, again, some, you know, having the ability to work through their budget and make sure they can plan accordingly. The prohibition on the single-family lots that we talked about with limiting the bottom, the ranch home, and then the second smallest of the two-story homes on those adjacent lots. That is also part of the annexation agreement. If the village board were to vote no on that, that would be taken off the table as well. So mainly the two items they're looking at in concessions are the building permit fee lock and then they're offering the provision on the adjacent home.
And it's noted that as we were going through this process, after the last board meeting, staff did talk to the developer and we looked at options with the building fees that the village and the impact fees that we impose. If there was any way to get to a level that we thought would be more appealing to the residents in that neighborhood. And the hard part is with the building fees that we have available, the impact fees that we have, I don't think it would have changed Ava. They've made it clear that they need a minimum house size to be at the lower end by that 1,900 square feet. So I know that that was something that the residents had asked for more than that, but that's they said they needed those smaller homes in their floor plan. And then as far as upgrades to the aesthetic amenities, the architectural amenities, they were willing to maybe consider different sidings and whatnot, but not necessarily any brick or major elements that would have changed. I think the architectural request that maybe some people would like. But we did try. So and that would be part of the annexation because that is a negotiation.
Yeah, and the moment you try, the moment you try to include those elements, whether it be, you know, square footage or design facade criteria that, you know, again, they could just pull off, pull the annexation agreement off the table and just go forward naturally with the development of the property.
To me, it almost seems like the builder is basically trying to cash out on the and the fact that these people build 4,000 square foot homes and spend high, high price you know, high-priced homes, building, you know, half of the size homes there. So I mean, I don't necessarily would disagree with their position right now. I, you know, I just don't think we're in a good position to make a decision one way or another as a board, you know, because as Mike said, I mean, it the builder will go through and sell those homes. Who wouldn't buy a house, you know, for half of the price or perhaps less, you know, in a beautiful subdivision? You know, I just don't see it fair for the homeowners. They already took a real estate market hit over the last eight, 10 years, and now they're going to take another hit, you know, with the resale of their properties. Mike, from what I understand what you're saying and Kevin, is that we have some discretion to not agree to the annexation agreement, but we're very limited on the plat. So effectively, if we have to pass the plat, they don't have to bring forth the annexation agreement amendment, and they can build on phase three or lot three anyway, correct?
Correct.
And there's nothing we can do, the restrictions that they've offered, there's nothing we can do to prevent them from building 1,800 square foot house, one level right next to an existing home.
Right. I know numerous circumstances, Mark, that would be correct.
So I guess my my other number one, I don't want to end up in court. I totally feel for the residents of Moose Lake Estates. But the village has to also look at, you know, our own well-being as a village. And because this doesn't just impact Moose Lake, it impacts every other resident in the village of North Ror. And if we're going to get sued by a builder for refusing to pass the plat, that's going to cost the taxpayers of North Ror and not just the residents of Moose Lake Estates for something that is out of our control. So in order to maybe mediate something, just, and I'm just throwing this out there as a possible concession to both sides. Would it be possible if the village gave a concession to the building permit fees in order to enhance the builder, encourage the builder to use brick in their front facades? And maybe keep, since we can't restrict the size, at least maybe give them a concession from the village from what we can control to see if that would encourage them to put a full front facade of brick or improve the the front facade?
Steve can answer that. We had that discussion.
Did we?
My trustee Carol, that was what I was getting at. When we looked at the building impact fees per lot, I think it comes out to $5,700 a lot. And all of that, between $300,000 and $400,000 worth of building impact fees, didn't appear not only to increase the house size, nor did it, nor did they seem to be willing to consider brick facades for that amount of money.
That would cost a taxpayer money anyway. It's one pocket or the other. And that's 400,000.
And that's $400,000 that comes out of the fund too. So, um, yeah, it sounds like we're, uh, in a hard spot. So.
But what recourse could the HOA take? I mean, can't we just approve it knowing that our hands are tied? And then the HOA, you know, they're going to have to have an emergency meeting?
I think we need to find out where they're at on that because I think like, uh, Mike Toll said earlier, I think they had some discussions, they had some dialogue. And I don't, uh, they could discuss, tell us tonight, I guess, what, uh, what that outcome is, but, uh.
Maybe, maybe we've gone to the point where we've had enough discussion from the trustee standpoint. I think we all, you know, we still have questions about the HOA, but I think and we have, we don't, we shouldn't have any questions about the legality of, uh, of, uh, the type three, uh,
E3.
Yeah, yeah, first one and, and, uh, and what we have to gain for, for moving on the second one. It was the way I look at it. I think one is saying that's, number one is, is something we were required to do. If we don't do it, well, are they going to go ahead anyway? Yeah. If we, uh, if we do it and then go on and approve two, then at least we have some concessions from the, from the builder that is going to make it a little better than what we have. But that's the way I look at it. You know, they could start building as soon as they close on the property, uh, houses of whatever they want to. Truthful. So, you know, our hands are somewhat tied, but I think they're willing to make some concessions. And again, granted, if the homeowners association has some power to make it different, that's great. That's, you know, that's to them. But as far as the village board's concerned, as far as, at least the way I look at it is that, uh, our hands are pretty well tied. And the best we can do is get some concessions by approving. We've, we've, we've offered some of the other things that Steve mentioned, uh, building permits and whatever. So it just doesn't add up to what they're wanting to do. So. Is everybody satisfied? We can open it up to a discussion from the, uh?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. I don't know how we can do this, but it seems to me that, uh, if, uh, if there's a, someone from the spokesman, from the, the group, homeowners association or whatever, that could speak first, that might be the first thing. And then we'll go, you know, down the line from there. I don't know how else to do it. Do you have an idea, Steve?
I'm looking right now in the participants to see if I see, um, anybody specifically on the HOA board. I'm sure they're here. There's about 100 people in the room, so I'm looking.
There's gentleman Derek with his hand up.
All right, Dave. There's definitely a, um, person.
I see three people wanting to speak.
Okay, three now?
All right, hold, uh, okay. So I have a list of people that have requested to speak through the, that's raise your hand or through the chat at this point. So I do have a list of people. So I'm not sure how we want to go about doing that.
I don't know if there's able, we're able to, uh, do it, you know, make something, just start at the top and let's go.
All right, it's, it's not, it's not as many as last time, Mayor Berman. All right. So first we have, uh, Pablo and Rebecca Hernandez. I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself. Please state your, your full name and your address. Thank you.
Hi, this is Pablo Hernandez of 536 North Sycamore Lane. Actually, I've got a question. Can I defer to, um, Vince Tessitore? Uh, he's in our subdivision as well. We have a lot of the same points. And I think he's, he's got probably a couple better items to talk about first.
Very good, very good, Pablo, very good.
I would like to speak later, but I would like to defer to him first, if that's possible.
I've asked Vince to unmute himself. Vince, if you'd like to speak, if you don't, just go ahead and mute yourself. My Vince has remuted himself. Vince, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're unmuted now.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Pablo. I didn't really recognize that that was going to happen, but I'm happy to speak. But, um, you know, I understand Attorney Adrona's point about the PUD ordinance provisions applying at the time that the development was approved in 2003 as criteria for the development at the time. I, you know, the, that legal position though, would, within that legal position is an acknowledgement that the PUD ordinance govern, governing the Gladstone approval um, back in 2003, took into consideration the PUD factors. And 5.1 and 5.4 were specifically mentioned by trustee Gutley. And I apologize if I'm saying your name wrong, but, okay, thanks. But with that approval, the village did in fact have to look at and approve architectural standards.
No.
For instance, section 5.4M prohibits physical features that negatively impact the neighborhood. So at the time, if you're only looking at the approval from 2003, the only architectural features or physical features under 5.4M to look at would have been the Gladstone physical features. So at the time, when the PUD was passed, and by the way, there is no separate PUD ordinance. It's, it's only the annexation agreement and I know that from the FOIA request I made. So the Gladstone physical features had to have been approved by section 5.4M at the time of the approval in 2003. The physical features of the MI product are not the Gladstone features. And there's been a lot of testimony on this. There may be some more tonight. But I, I think it's evident from the last hearing and probably from further testimony today that the MI physical features fall well short of the Gladstone physical features. So I, I realize that we're talking about whether or not the village can deny a building permit as opposed to whether or not the village should approve the plat or annexation agreement. Because when we're talking about whether or not the project complies with zoning, we're talking about whether or not we can deny a building permit. And I think the village should deny any building permit submitted because the approval back in 2003, under 5.4M, only approved physical features that were presented at the time. It's not a blanket approval for anything that comes down the road that's inconsistent with what was presented at the time. The PUD ordinance goes into great detail about the purpose of that ordinance. And one of the purposes is to guarantee quality construction. And this is in section 5.1 that the trustee mentioned earlier. So in order to make any sense at all of that PUD ordinance, I respectfully suggest that the architectural standards that were approved at the time are an entitlement and cannot be violated. And, and that the MI Homes proposal does violate them. And therefore, there's a zoning violation that building permits should be denied as a result of. Thank you.
Okay, we have, uh, Kenneth Olson will speak next.
Thank you. Uh, thank you trustees and thank you Vince. Um, very technical. I won't be as technical, but there are a few questions that were raised throughout this process. And, uh, I'd like to, to draw your attention on that. One, on the annexation agreement, I overheard or I, I heard that there's a different provision for one owner versus multiple owners. And I would ask the board to consider, why is this not a consideration of a multiple owner? Vince's point, uh, the provisions that Gladstone had presented was one owner. It was their product. And now we have a second owner coming in with a far inferior product, uh, with, uh, uh, architectural designs. That's really quite embarrassing. So I ask you to consider that. The other question was what has changed in eight years? And, uh, drastic amounts of things have changed in eight years, including uh, that Gladstone's not been able to, uh, develop any of the property. And, uh, economic situations have changed. Um, the, the environment has changed. Sounds like you've made other changes to, um, the PUD policies. And I think it's really important that it was, it was very clear that, you know, the, this particular PUD, if I understood that right, was silent on these standards. So, um, I think it's important to bring that into, uh, this discussion that if it wasn't stated that there's, uh, minimum housing development standards for this neighborhood because it was silent, it's now the trustee's opportunity to correct that. And to trustee Carol's, uh, point, um, you know, with the HOA, I know the HOA's been hard at work trying to look at these provisions. The HOA was significantly delayed in being able to put in, uh, our covenants because, uh, the development was so slow, uh, fast that Gladstone maintained control of the HOA for an extended period of time. And I, I think it's important that we have an opportunity to make that correction as a new owner is coming into place. Last, and, and I don't think that this is, um, I don't have any nicer way to say this, but, uh, you know, there's been consideration of what is this going to cost the taxpayers? If, um, if you were to deny this and, and that there's a lawsuit, what is it going to cost the village in PR? I know that I won't take this standing down and I will, um, be as vocal as I possibly can be to protect, uh, the house that I built and, and the equity that it, that it stands. And it'd be quite embarrassing to, uh, have a shed, uh, built next to me. And I'm sorry, but a 1,900 square foot home next to a 3,000 square foot home is a shed. Uh, I, I ask you, uh, very conscientiously to consider all the maneuver here and, um, to deny this request, um, with at least, uh, without at least a minimum build standard that meets, uh, an agreeable solution for both parties. Thank you for your time.
All right, uh, Scott Barronberger from M.I. Homes has asked to speak.
Uh, hello, everybody. This is Scott Barronberger from M.I. Homes. Uh, I, I made sure to, uh, put my hand up and, and enter a comment in the chat because I'd like our, uh, our attorney Vince Rosanova to be able to speak to some of the uh, discussion and occasional speculation that we heard at the top of the meeting. Just to clear up some, uh, some misinformation that we heard and make sure everybody's aware of, uh, uh, the facts of our proposal. So if we can turn, turn it over to Vince Rosanova, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, Vince, you should be unmuted.
Good evening, everybody. This is Vince Rosanova on behalf of M.I. Homes. We appreciate the opportunity to be back before you this evening. I just, uh, wanted to go through a couple of comments. I made some notes as we were listening to the deliberations as well as some of the public testimony. The first comment I would like to make relates to, uh, the presentation of village attorney Grendel. I believe that the question was asked if the village has discretion or not to approve the final plat of subdivision for unit three. Uh, just to add a little more of, uh, interpretation on that or our point of view on that. We reviewed the original annexation agreement, which is in place and effectively a contract between the, uh, developer owner as well as the village. It's in effect till 2023. Uh, specifically, the annexation agreement says that the village must approve the final plats of subdivision that are in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat of subdivision, which was approved as part of the annexation agreement. The testimony we heard tonight indicates that the plat of subdivision for unit three, which we submitted, is not only in substantial conformance, but it's almost a mirror image subject to one or two additional easements requested, uh, by the village engineer. Uh, so not only, uh, is the village required to approve a, uh, final plat of subdivision that meets all village code requirements of the subdivision control ordinance, which it does, but we also have a annexation agreement as well as the Second Amendment in place, which specifically grant those contract rights, uh, indicating that, uh, the final plat must be approved. I, I also, uh, heard the suggestion that maybe it would be beneficial to delay the final plat of subdivision approval to give the homeowners, uh, time to amend the covenants. Uh, we do not agree with this approach. Uh, we believe that that approach is effectively, uh, the village deferring or defaulting on a contract right to approve the plat of subdivision to give the homeowners association time then to undermine, uh, the owner's property rights. Uh, so we would not be, uh, in support of that whatsoever. And we would also point out that the covenants don't allow for the homeowners to amend them to add in additional requirements to the detriment of the developer and the clearing. So even if that additional time was granted, it would not be effective. I'd also, uh, like to just reiterate that as much as we, uh, would be willing to enter into an annexation agreement amendment and provide the village with the additional protections and the additional concessions for the residents, that that annexation agreement amendment that we had requested is totally within the village's discretion and purview. Uh, if the village would, would like to ensure that we will fulfill and perform the public improvements, which are currently the village's obligation. Uh, if the village would like to confirm that we will complete the punch list and clear up a lot of issues out there, which, uh, has plagued this subdivision, then we believe that the amendment to the annexation agreement is a good idea for all parties. Uh, with regard to Mr. Tessitore's interpretation of the PUD zoning ordinance, this interpretation is inconsistent with Illinois law. The elements of a PUD are determined at the time of the initial PUD approval and relate to the zoning, which in this case is E3 PUD, which is in fact intact. Uh, essentially, I believe Mr. Tessitore, uh, is trying to say that if the homes are not large enough or costly enough, that they somehow violate the PUD zoning. Uh, not only is this untrue and inconsistent with Illinois law, but I also believe it violates, uh, our state's laws relating to inclusionary zoning. Uh, so those were the preliminary comments that I wanted to make in regard to the discussion that I heard so far. And, uh, if this, uh, board would allow it, I, I would like to, uh, have a chance for a rebuttal after we hear additional testimony to see. Thank you.
Very good, Vince.
Okay, next we have Katie. All right, Katie, please state your full name and your address. Hello? Okay, uh, next we have Pablo Hernandez.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank all the trustees for their time and patience with all of this. Um, I do have a couple of additional points to make. Going back to, I've got a bunch of notes here, I'm sorry. Uh, going back to trustee Curtis's point, um, if the plat is approved, um, I don't believe the homeowners would have the 75% voting rights to be able to approve any additional, any additional, uh, changes, anything to our declarations, to our bylaws, uh, that would have any impact whatsoever. Right now, I believe as the, if I'm not mistaken, as the plats currently sit, the homeowners do have, uh, the ability to make any changes. So if that is approved, I believe we lose that, um, just to let you know that. Secondly, I understand, uh, Mr. Rossanova is very worried about deferring and waiting for any additional due diligence. I do not think that's fair to the village. I don't think it's fair to the HOA. I don't think it's fair to the residents. Because they want to rush the village into making a decision because he states that they really need to get this done. Uh, according to his own, his own information, really, there's, we have until 2023 to be able to approve, uh, the plat. So there shouldn't be any rush. Just because M.I. has a deadline on their end that they would pull out before the end of the year, does not mean that we need to comply with their deadline. I don't believe that's in anyone's best interest other than M.I.'s. Another thing is, uh, Mr. Rossanova also referenced not complying with the, or not, not needing to follow the PUD. Well, even if you take a step back to the original zoning ordinance, uh, section 1.2 of the zoning ordinance, um, states that their intent is to conserve the taxable value of land and buildings throughout the municipality and to fix standards to which buildings or structures therein shall conform. That's not part of the PUD. That's part of the original zoning ordinance that predate the PUD. the PUD, and I'm sure Mr. Rossa Nova will come back and and massage whatever he needs to 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 uh take value away from that statement, but that is a statement that is in there. Also, the, the statement, going back to a statement that he previously made um in the, in the meeting that we had a month ago or so, a few weeks ago. Uh, he stated that MNI could come in and pull sixty-eight permits and build eight hundred square foot homes if they wanted to. Um, that sounds a little bit like strong-arming, trying to threaten, or I'm sorry, to scare the village and the residents, the HOA, into conforming and accepting their proposal. I don't think anybody should be put into that position. Um, and I don't believe that's the case. They can go ahead and submit proposals for eight hundred square foot homes all they want, all day, uh as much as they want, but that does not fit into what the Village of North Aurora zoning ordinance requirement states. That will definitely hurt the taxable value of land and buildings. So I don't think that his statements have any, any basis in influencing your decisions as a board. Um, I do appreciate your time. I'm sorry, um, I'm being told that Katie was trying to unmute, so she was unable to speak. Um, but anyway, so I thank you for your time, and that's about all I have.
Okay, uh, we have Katie and Sean.
Let's try to go round two. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Ah, thank you. So sorry about that. Um, well, thank you for your time. My name is Katie Ferguson. I live at five oh three Prairie Ridge Lane. Uh, my husband Sean and I moved to Moose Lake Estates in October twenty nineteen. We are relatively newer, uh relatively younger than others in the area. Um, the reason we moved here was because we didn't want to move to the establishment actually out in Plainfield, which had some of the same issues. We saw the neighborhood looked uninviting and divided. Um, and what MI Homes proposed doesn't compare to what we currently have in our North Aurora neighborhood. Bringing those homes in would not only devalue our current homes and the community, but it might possibly divide us and make it a very uninviting neighborhood. Um, MI does have better quality homes that they have provided in other neighborhoods like ours. So why aren't they able to provoke, propose those higher quality, more comparable homes here? Um, we finally found, sorry, uh, we finally found a diverse neighborhood where, where we know everyone on our block uh around the corner, and we've made new friends all over the neighborhood, uh, in and out of North Aurora. We would hate to live in a divided community, and it seems to be an effect that this might have. So I would just like you to make efforts in your decision in bringing better quality and bringing more value and better attention to our neighborhood. That would bring in a lot more people. If you have time, please drive by our neighborhood. Come see all the families that have invested their future in this community. Please see the quality and the uniqueness of the subdivision before making a decision to bring these proposed homes into our neighborhood. Um, we were looking to build actually in Plainfield, and we looked at BBB accredited options. Uh, the only reason we didn't do it for those builders, not MI Homes, of course, uh, for the builders that we looked up was because they didn't have the aesthetic options or the materials that we were looking for. It was challenging to find a bigger space. We're a young couple, and we wanted more space to build our family. Um, and I would just like you to consider all this. It's, MI is a business that's been there for forty years, and they're not BBB accredited. So I would just like you to take into account everything that our community has to offer, and thank you so much.
Katie, I appreciate what you have to say. I think we all know the value of the homes. We know the value of the community, and we have driven through it, obviously. But uh, I think that uh, you know, we know it's beautiful. We know you'd love to have neighbors that are the same as you. Hopefully, we can uh come close to that. Who's the next speaker?
All right, Mr. Berman, the uh last person we have is Mike Hurley. Mike, if you want to go ahead and state your name and your address, please.
I see you got me unmuted. Um, Mike Hurley, four forty-five North Sixth Lane. Um, I do want to point out um the presentation of the Zoom after me today was um, uh, at last meeting, I cannot find the hand raised thing. And I mentioned that on behalf of uh primarily Village Board's awareness, as well as the rest of ninety-six people or whatever that are on board here. If there's anybody else just to speak, uh, please type a message in the uh chat window. Um, um, I, you know, I spoke at the last um Village Board meeting, um, and I was very um impressed with Dale's opening, recognizing December seventh. Uh, Dale indicating he was there. And as we, as a, as a, the subdivision have been working on this um issue, challenge, um, complexity, whatever you want to call it, uh, for the last, less than a month. Um, I'm one of the few people, and I think uh Dale and Mark uh may have been around back in two thousand and three, either on the plan commission or Village Board, um, when we actually reviewed and approved the annexation agreement plats and whatnot. Uh, I'm being told I'm breaking up. Can I be heard okay?
You're all right.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Sorry, sorry. Um, uh, but back then, you know, as we developed the village extensively, Moose Lake and areas north and west of uh Orchard Road, uh, we developed the estate zoning of which the E three classification, I believe, is the only surviving category. Um, uh, it was part of a uh much larger vision uh for the village. And I think developer came into us. Uh, they came in with their lawyers and the necessary paperwork, and then they came in with a lot of other things. Uh, Gladstone builders came in and said, here's my package. Here's my preliminary plot. Here's my annexation agreement, and here is what I'm going to build. Um, he referred us to a current subdivision over on Seventy-Fifth Street in uh Naperville. Uh, I believe every Village Board member at the time, uh, and the village clerk at the time got in their cars and drove over there. Um, and many, many people from the village um ultimately invested in Moose Lake Estates, their trails, Lake Run, et cetera, and this development um uh shift in diversity, the content of the village has had a very, very positive impact. Um, we did not codify square footage. Um, why didn't we codify square footage? Uh, we discussed it, discussed it extensively. And we believed, and the developers all agreed at the time, that the lot size is going to drive the content, the value, and the economics. So we, as a board, didn't believe we had to codify square footage or architectural features. And at the time, it was rare in the western suburbs for any municipality to do that. Um, but here we are today, and we're faced with a very challenging dilemma. We have a huge number of residents that have not only invested in the home that Gladstone built, but have invested extensively in enhancing those homes, whether it's uh a very nice backyards, patios, fireplaces, built-in pools, um, paved driveways, enhanced landscaping, you know, a lot, a lot of neat things have been done in this subdivision. And, and it's, it's grown into being a very, very open, friendly community. Um, I listened to the comments tonight, and I think back to when I was uh on the board back then as well. Uh, funny, I feel like the old guy now. Um, but um, Dale, you still hold that. Um, we're talking about, uh, well, our hands are tied, and this is what they're entitled to do. And so MI Homes has proposed products from as low as less than fifteen hundred feet up to as high as nominally twenty-eight or hundred or three thousand square feet. That's what they're proposing now. But I want to remind you, that's not codified. What if they were to decide next week, next month, or next year, that in order to manage their velocity, they wanted to build eight hundred, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred square foot homes in and amongst this community? By the documents, Kevin's explanation was very, very thorough, maybe a couple of legal opinions in there, but very, very thorough and very, very helpful, especially to uh dozens of residents uh on the phone. Um, by Kevin's rationale, that would be fully permissible. There is certainly a primary concern to all the residents here. What would that do to our home values? There's a secondary and probably much more permanent impact. If it does something to our home values, our market value, it does something to our assessed value, and it does something to the village's tax base. And I think, you know, making a decision right now because we only know what we know might lead us into a much more difficult situation. We have been working a number of different ways uh as the HOA, and by the way, you know, the HOA is, is, is reaching out to try to be the hub of these discussions, but these are very, very pertinent individual homeowner issues. The scope of an HOA is to manage the public space in the um, uh, in the community. And uh, uh, we have, we have those, uh, we have those limitations. Um, but nevertheless, we have banded together. We've had dozens of residents walking around, communicating with other residents. Been a very uh active several weeks. Um, and um, if anything, uh, we're looking for some more time to try to assess what the options are. There have been some discussions with um MI Homes. Um, there have been reviews of the bylaws and declarations and documents and whatnot, and that continues. Has uh, MI Homes agreed to all the requests? No. And most of the responses have come in, oh, we can make that an option. We can make that an option. But set that aside for right now. Think about if the premise is side of square foot doesn't matter, even with what they're proposing, it apparently still doesn't matter. So think about what the eventual outcome could be, and is that what you want to see as completion of an important sector of the village? Those are my comments, and um I'll turn over the mic if there's anybody else uh looking to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mayor Berman, we have Valerie Schoger wishes to speak.
All right. Valerie.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Valerie Schoger. I'm at fourteen seventy-three Hearthstone Lane. I um am a resident of Windstone Place. I don't live in Moose Lake Estates. Um, but I do support those residents that live in Moose Lake Estates, and I support the residents of North Aurora. Um, I have, I've, I grew up in North Aurora. I've lived in North Aurora for most of my life. And what is being proposed? Having these smaller homes go into a beautiful subdivision that had the vision of being a completely built estate home subdivision. It's, it's not what North Aurora needs. We have, we have a very diverse um community. Um, we have housing for um, you know, all types of incomes. We have many townhome communities. We have apartment rentals. We have single-family homes on all different levels. These are estate homes, and I would just like to ask that the trustees take their time in making their decision on this. Please don't take um don't take this lightly. Um, the residents, we, we love North Aurora. And it, this is just not the vision that I think anyone had for this subdivision. And I'm really disheartened to hear the builder's attorney basically threaten the village. Please take your time in making the final decision. We, th- these are homes that are going to be there forever, and um we want to increase the value in our community, and the look that um this builder will be bringing into Moose Lake Estates is not going to fit in. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Valerie. You know, the entire board and every member of the board loves North Aurora as much as you do. Some of us have lived there longer, some maybe less, but we love the community also, and we love every part of it. Moose Lake Estates and uh every, every area of the village. So, and we certainly are trying to do our best. I think the attorney for MNI Homes was not, he was not threatening. He was telling it like it is. And that's, you know, that's what we have to look at. We have to look at the legal facts. And, you know, and then try to derive from that, what are the benefits we can get out of things as opposed to just uh opposing everything and letting things happen and not get anything in return. So it's a perplexing thing for our county, for the village board, but we all love the village. So, thank you.
Okay, we have the last person who wishes to speak is Derek. Uh, I've seen you raise your hand, and I've had several people notify me in the meeting that you were raising your hand. So uh, Derek, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you can speak.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm going to be brief. My family and I were new to the community, and we did a lot of searching before we decided to move to North Aurora. We do find it a very um beautiful um subdivision. We've been here since July thirty-first, and I want to um thank the members of the community who came and rang our doorbell and gave us the information because we had no clue. And so with that in mind, I'm trying to catch up to everything and understand. Um, I have a question of entities. I thought this was the homeowners association, but it doesn't appear to be the homeowners association. So I'm trying to figure out, is this the village board that we are in, in a meeting with? And also a question of authority. Um, is MNI, MNI Homes, do they have the authority to just come in and just build houses? And I mean, strongarm us almost. That's kind of how I feel. There was a comment made earlier that they could actually build a nineteen hundred square foot home next to one of our homes. And my question is, who, you know, who has the authority to either adjust that train of thought or block that train of thought? And um, it's my understanding that these are states. And so I'm a little confused as to the authoritative entities involved in this, whether it's the homeowners association or the village board or whoever has that authority, and then where do we fall in as residents who oppose or potentially opposes um these initiatives that MNI Homes is trying to um pretty much shove down our throats? At least I'm new, and that's how I feel. So I'm sure I'm not the only one. Um, so it's, it's the village board. It's not the homeowners association, and we're the ones that have the uh
the jurisdiction of the problem. So, thank you much. Any other? David?
We have one last. Um, sorry, it's a, it's just a name in the chat. T. Perrier Junior, maybe? I'm sorry if I butchered your name. Um.
Well, uh, you're letting uh the last person in. I, I think maybe Mr. Dorch's questions deserve a response. So maybe I can, I can give a brief one.
Very good.
Um, you know, the, the, the village has limited authority over property in the village, and that authority is exercised through zoning and subdivision. Um, subdivision basically determines, you know, lot sizes and where roads go and graded grades and things like that. lot sizes and where roads go and graded grades and things like that. And usually, most of the subdivision code applies at the time of development, and it sets the standards for how property gets developed. Zoning operates in somewhat the same way in the sense that the village determines, you know, where residential and commercial and industrial districts go, and, and then also different, differentiates within those districts. So there's, you know, a, a spectrum of residential districts with the estate district being one that has larger lot sizes.
We call that a comprehensive plan.
Right. And it's, it's all kind of, right, incorporated into a comprehensive plan that tries to make a little bit of sense out of how things get developed out within the village. But, you know, the, the authority that a municipality has is pretty limited. And it's limited to applying uniform standards that would apply and setting minimums within which people need to operate, but it, it doesn't dictate what someone has to do on their property. So, you know, the village zoning or zoning authority does not trump property rights other than in some kind of very basic ways. And, and that's kind of what we're dealing with here. In two thousand and three, when Gladstone came in, as Mike Hurley, he explained, you know, they, they had a grand vision for what they were going to do to build out this subdivision, and they, they got their, the annexation agreement approved, and it established certain parameters which are in place, but those parameters are limited. They don't, they don't go very far to restrict what can be done. And of course, if everything had gone according to plan, Gladstone would have completed the buildout of this subdivision years ago. And I, everybody expected that the subdivision would be built out within five years, you know, certainly within ten years. But here we are, almost going on twenty years, obviously, and nobody foresaw the drastic economic downturn that we would go through. And, and nobody dreamed that we'd be sitting here eighteen, nineteen years later, you know, looking at a third of the subdivision undeveloped. You know, obviously hindsight's twenty twenty. You know, if we could turn back the clock to two thousand and three, and, you know, have some sense of what the future might bring, you know, perhaps we would have set in place minimum standards for buildings on the lots. But if you look at the, the zoning code, and if you look at most zoning codes in most communities around, what they do is they establish maximums, you know, a maximum floor area ratio, which is the maximum size of what you can put on a lot. They don't, the zoning codes typically don't establish minimum floor area ratios. You know, the zoning codes specify the size of the lot and the, the minimum size. They, they specifies the setbacks, rear yard, side yard, corner yard, et cetera. You know, but they're all, you know, they're all very basic parameters, and they don't dictate what anyone can build on a particular property. You know, that, that would be, you know, an exercise in arbitrary authority, really, that would take away the property rights of people that own property. And of course, property rights are, you know, are sacrosanct in the United States. People have freedom. And it really is unfortunate, I think, you know, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think I do, in saying that everybody recognizes the concerns of the residents and identifies with those concerns and acknowledges that they're legitimate concerns about, you know, what's happening potentially in the property. Units one and two are not, they're not on the table for discussion in terms of, you know, approving anything. Today, with, without an annexation agreement and without any action on the unit three plat, Gladstone could build anything that it wants to build within the parameters that exist. And of course, there are parameters, and could sell to MI Homes or to another developer who could come in and build out a lot or two or three or four. And, you know, they'd be pulling building permits, and we would, we don't have a hammer that we can use to make somebody build what we want, other, other than to make them fit within the parameters that exist, which we can't change, and we can't add to. So that's, that's really kind of where we're at, unfortunately, at this point.
I'm at four fifteen Prairie Ridge Lane, and I'm wondering, is the unit three that's in question, is that this big open lot that's kind of like right in the center here?
Yeah, maybe Dave could bring up the unit three plat or bring up the whole plat of the subdivision, perhaps.
That's side twelve.
Yeah. So that, I think that's what you're talking about, the, the bolded lots there. That's unit three, which is not built out. It's just open space right now.
Gotcha. Thank you so much for responding to those concerns. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, David, moving on.
Mr. Berman, all right, I guess I'm gonna butcher this name because it's just in the chat, but it's T. Perrier Jr., I'm guessing. I'm sorry if I totally butchered your name, but you can go ahead and, I'm gonna unmute you, and you can speak.
Oh, you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sorry, it's T. Pierre. It's Thomas Pierre. I live on five thirty-three Sycamore Lane. Um, you know, just to go back to what was said earlier from Kevin, um, basically, you know, we, this community is something that we cherish, and we, 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 we want to keep, we want to uphold. I think we, we've come to the point where if this was the right thing being done, I don't think there would be an issue between the residents here, or we would be having this discussion. It'd be a different, a totally different discussion. You know, I'm, I'm more of a realist type. I kind of keep it black and white. I mean, essentially comes down to, you know, us as residents, people that live here. You know, when we were looking for a home three years ago to, to come here, we kind of felt like we found a, a, you know, the, the potable at the end of, end of the rainbow, where we could raise our, you know, our family, the community. We have lots of friends in this neighborhood. We, we, we like the, you know, we enjoyed the rules that the HOA and community uphold. I mean, if you go down Sycamore right now, you can see our community with the Christmas theme and the lights and, and how we all, you know, we, we, we do that as a community because there's something different, something special that we want to grow. I mean, the biggest issue is, don't, and I know it might be a one percent hope with all this legality, legality that's going back and forth between, you know, what M and I is saying, what the village feels like they have right that they can do, or even the HOA. Bottom line is, let's not let, you know, we, we have to use common sense and not let, I feel like we're getting sold a, a pig with lipstick on it, and we're just supposed to, that can tap dance, and we're just supposed to fold and take that. And I just feel like we can, we can do better than that. We're, there's enough people here that we can figure this out to make this something special and keep what was originally planned back in oh three. Keep that going and, and kind of make this community something that everyone would enjoy instead of what we're, we're, we're being sent or being told or being given a show to right now.
Okay, that sounds, you know, I, I think we all agree with what we'd like to have with this. You know, I have, in my life, I haven't found things to be black and white. There's so damn much gray out there that we have to work with every day. So, but more power to you. All right, that concludes our, our speaking. Now, I know that Vince wanted to get back, wanted to have something to say from M one. Did you, still there?
Just unmuted Vince.
All right.
I am. Thank you. I just, just very briefly to, to respond to some of those, some of the comments that we heard. I just want to first start off by saying we're not attempting to rush anything. This, this has been a, a fairly long process already. We first attended the village board COW on October nineteenth. Following up from that meeting, we then reached out to the HOA, had a, had a Zoom meeting on November second. Three weeks ago, we were back at the village board meeting. We're back tonight. And then we anticipate being back on December twenty-first, which altogether is four meetings for a preliminary plat of subdivision, which I believe is at ministerial approval. So, so certainly not trying to, to rush anything, certainly trying to be inclusive, reach out to everybody, have these discussions, but also make sure that, that we're able to move forward. It was suggested that the village has until twenty twenty-three under the annexation agreement to approve the plat. I believe that this was a misinterpretation of the annexation agreement. The annexation agreement expires in twenty twenty-three, but certainly the village can't wait three years to approve the plat. I just also want to make sure everybody knows that I'm simply not trying to strong arm anybody or come off aggressive in any regard. I just wanted to make sure that MI, as well as the property owner's rights, were fairly represented and accurately stated. To that regard, I gave the example of what can be built on these lots by right. And, and I just wanted to make sure that, that everybody had that information before making a decision. Now, obviously, MI, being a reputable business, a reputable builder, has reached out to the association and agreed to voluntary restrictions on what can be built on the existing lots next to existing homes in units one and two to address these concerns. At the end of the day, I truly do not agree with some of the comments, namely that adding sixty-eight single family homes will cause a divided neighborhood. I do not believe that sixty-eight new neighbors will, will create that sort of animosity. I, I know that originally that the homeowners were afraid that somebody was going to come in and propose apartments or townhomes on the vacant unit three, which is certainly not the case here. We have a reputable builder who's coming in and proposing single family homes next to single family homes. The remaining sixty-eight lots only represent a total of twenty-seven percent of all the lots in the neighborhood, which is about one out of every four homes, and will certainly not change the character of the neighborhood. And let's not forget the thirty-eight of those sixty-eight, or thirty-six of those sixty-eight homes are in their own individual unit predominantly amongst themselves. And on the thirty-two lots, which are in units one and two, where there are existing homes, we've agreed to self-restrict twenty-one of them to be considerate of the homeowner's concern. So to the contrary, that we're gonna create a divided neighborhood, I would actually say that we're gonna complete a subdivision, which has been incomplete for over a decade. We're gonna add new homes, which is on trend and consumer-inspired. We're gonna complete the public improvements, cause considerable consternation to the village and the residents, including stormwater issues that will be alleviated. We're gonna add sixty-eight new homeowners, fair share of assessments, which is gonna make the homeowners association even more viable in the future and make these homes marketable. We're also gonna improve the village's real estate tax base and bring additional consumers and spenders to the community, which is part of the village's comprehensive plan. And we're also gonna complete the failed subdivision, which is also one of the village's comprehensive plan goals. So at the end of the day, we believe in our homes. We believe that they will have a positive impact on this community, and we're gonna continue to, to hopefully work with the homeowners as we proceed forward. So we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Vince. All right. Any trustees have any comments? Staff, have any comments?
Just direction. That's what we're looking for at the end of this meeting tonight.
What was that?
Direction. We're just looking for direction.
Well, let's go trustee one by one. Trustee Curtis, what do you think?
You know, I heard, I truly did listen to all the comments that were made tonight. And I, I think it's two separate issues. I think the, the plat and the annexation agreement aren't directly correlated to the product that the builder wants to build. I think we as a board, I think in many ways, as Attorney Drundle said, our hands are tied. In that regard, though, I would like to see the HOA, you know, do whatever they can to investigate on their own through counsel or through other ways they can to remedy this to see if there's some, some, some way that they can work with the builder or compel the builder based on, on a legal process to incorporate more conformity within the community. So, you know, again, I think these are two separate issues, and I think we really, I mean, they're gonna build whether or not we, we vote this through or not. So I, you know, I think as, as a board, we really, I, I almost think in a way that benefiting the residents that we approve this, incorporating the minimum standards, the concessions that MI has given us, because now at least we know that's the worst it could be versus not passing it, not having any, some, any sort of protection, and now they put thirteen, fourteen, fifteen hundred square foot homes. So when I'm looking at the lesser of two evils, and the lesser of two evils is theoretically the greater good, I'd like to see them have some protection if we can give them any at all, and therefore I'd be in favor of approving the vote.
All right, trustee Carol.
I mean, I, I, I think we have to bring it to a vote. I don't think we can delay it, but I, I, I don't know how I feel about it. I, I agree with Laura. I'm torn. I, I respect the, the citizens' comments, and, but I also respect the builders trying to, to make an improvement to an incomplete subdivision. I, I, I would love to see the builder make the concession that they're gonna build a minimum square foot house of twenty-five hundred square feet. I don't know that that's gonna happen. And I, I, I'd be curious to know why their minimum square footage is at nineteen hundred in a subdivision full of three thousand square foot houses, why they think that that's better or, or more conducive to their people they're selling to. But, and I haven't heard that. So I, I, I don't know. I, I think we have to bring it to a vote, but I, I very much respect what the, the concerns of the residents.
Mike?
Uh, thank you. I, I'd like to express my appreciation to the builder, first of all, for the concessions he's already made. I would like to see if he could. I know that he's in business, and businesses are designed to look at profit primarily more than anything. However, there's a human element to business too. And there's a, there's an element to a future and long-term reputation as a, a clean-cut decent outfit. And not to say that this isn't, don't get me wrong. I'm wondering, where I'm going with this is, I'm wondering if there could be some way to at least appease the individuals who already live there in terms of building perhaps more aesthetic architectural features. I, I mentioned a hip roof. I don't know how much more that would be in terms of a cost of a single building or not, or a brick facade, or something along those lines. That's what I would like to see. Regarding the board's responsibility, I agree with the other two trustees that have already spoken. We're in a bind. We, you know, we, our hearts, I know our hearts go out to the residents. I wouldn't like to see, in my, of course, my whole neighborhood is built out, but I wouldn't want to be in their position right now to be fearing that some small residence is gonna be built near my house and diminish the value of my house. However, to trustee Carol's point, I, I don't know. I would like to delay the vote to see if the HOA could do something, at least work with them in an amicable way, perhaps, to figure out some way that they come to a compromise. In terms of delaying the vote, I'm willing to go ahead and vote along with the rest of the board as well. And I think we have to, more or less, we don't have any other out except to approve these, apparently, from what I've learned tonight, although I'm gonna be voting reluctantly.
You know, I don't, it doesn't appear to me that the HOA has got the, the power to do much of anything. But, you know, that remains to be seen. Thank you. Tao, Martinez. Tao still with us? Cal still with us?
He's muted.
He's muted? David, you didn't mute him, did you?
Yes, thank you.
Steve, check the chat, please.
Yeah, thank you. Um, what I, I, I have no um, um, doubt that the builder, you know, has intentions of, you know, building uh, um, quality homes and, and then uh, you know, it has its own vision and markets change along the time. But because of markets changing, I think that, you know, it's creating a clash right now and, you know, uh, perhaps people are under the impression that we have uh, Almighty's power to stop or proceed with certain um, uh, decisions, right? And, and our, our, our decision-making is, is limited, right? Um, I, I would really like to see, you know, um, i- i- it's some sort of commitment, you know, I would, I would really like to see some sort of commitment uh, for the sake of uh, everybody there, uh, all the residents and the new residents, because I could tell you that, I don't, I don't really know how they're gonna be welcomed. And, and, you know, I, I would like to see, you know, a good subdivision and, and, and the cohesion that they're showing right now for, for this uh, uh, situation, right? And um, I, I, at this point, I understand our legal, our legal um, obligations and our uh, liabilities. And I, I would go through and perhaps try to hold back on my vote, and um, if I have to vote right now, it would not be a favorable vote for a builder or.
You know, one of the things that we have to take in mind that how many homes of the the size of those in Moose Lake Estates are being built now? You know, uh, uh, as I go around the area, very few. The other thing, you know, we talk about communities. Communities are based on the people who live there. That's what makes a community, not the size of a home. So uh, trustee Gaetle?
Yes, thanks Dale. Um, so frankly, I'd just like to see a little more from the builder, uh, that's, there's any more he can do on his end, uh, you know, work with us in the HOA. But that's what I have to say.
Good enough. trustee Gafino?
Thank you. Hello?
Hey.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. You know, um, I remember, I think I was on the planning mission when the, the, this property developed and, you know, it's really exciting and uh, and they are beautiful homes. I mean, it, you know, the big lots and the big houses and um, you know, unfortunately, maybe economies change, it has, and the, the smaller homes maybe what's selling, but you know, I'd like to see, and I've said this first time through this, that, you know, something more compatible. Um, I, I don't think the residents probably be totally happy with that, but I think they're looking at something that at least would be compatible with their investment, you know? Um, so according to our attorney legally, um, we don't have much to go on here. Um, so, but uh, yeah, I don't really care for it, not in favor of it at this time, but um, you know, well, the, the town is special, you know, and as a lot of those people mentioned, it's great to see the love for the community and for their subdivision. So um, that's, that's really cool. And like you said, Dale, I think everybody on the board feels the same way. But um, you know, we have to, I guess, look at it a couple of different, different ways and um, yeah, we could put it on the docket, or we can delay it. I'm, does, I don't really have a preference, I guess, delaying, I would give some more time, but like you said, I don't know if HOA would get traction enough to do anything for it or not, so. Thank you.
You know, there are no guarantees and uh, we've all lived through that. You know, we've all been here for a period of time and we've seen uh, you know, things happen, they see homes built and homes torn down, but, you know, and people complain about, you know, the different zoning or who's gonna be their neighbor or whether we shouldn't build a, an apartment there or whatever. So everybody's got their own opinions that, and it's always gonna, you know, from all my experience, and you go back to your planning commission days and, you know, we've all gone, grown up to the same thing in the villages, of trying to do the best thing for North Aurora. And there's no question about it. We've all attempted that. I've always said though, if you, you know, if, if you want something yourself, get 200 acres and build out in the middle of it, and you don't have to worry about anything. But other than that, there are no guarantees. And so, you know, I think we're at a point where uh, you know, we've gotta do something. And it may not be the thing that we all want, but we gotta do something, so. Anyway, thanks for the conversation.
Dale? Uh, just so you're aware, um, there are people uh, trying to get on to the chat. That's up to you and the board and audience comments, but there are a lot of people apparently who would like to speak.
Well, I don't, I think we've heard enough. I think, uh, I don't know if we can hear anything new. I think we, you know, we know the concerns of people. We know that they're worried about the value of the homes. I don't think that anybody saying that same thing is making any difference. I think, you know, the legal part of it is probably the most important thing and what, what we are bound to do legally.
Um, it, I, I have a request uh, for Brian Ioki Euro to speak. Is there a way we can let him speak? I'm something new and beneficial to add to the conversation?
Let's hope so.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the name again?
Uh, Brian Ioki Euro?
Cicero?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Hi, thanks everyone. Uh, yeah, there is some miscommunication about how discussion was gonna be handled tonight. We, I was told it was gonna be point one and point two, and I said my discussion was for point two, so that's how it got. Um, I, I think it's important, you know, the trustees keep kind of floating out the idea that the homeowners' association has some potential recourse here with our bylaws and, and some of the architectural issues. Dave Bolger unfortunately is the gift that keeps on giving for all of us. Um, you know, I, for, for a builder who, within the first year of building homes, turned around and sued homeowners because they put playground equipment in their backyard, this is the person we were dealing with. You know, uh, MNI and the first and last meeting had said that, you know, he had tried to sell homes. Several custom builders had come to him just to buy a couple lots. He refused. He did that because he knew the minute he got under a 25% ownership of the remaining lots, that then we, as a homeowners' association, could make changes to architectural design and put some rules in place that would help benefit our neighborhood. So, y- y- you know, and he had smaller, smaller models that he could have built in here, uh, because he did it in Windstone and we see that he's not finished Windstone either. So I think it's really important for everybody to remember that really we don't have recourse within the HOA. Um, you know, and that's why we've come to the board. Uh, a- at this point, you know, he purposely held 27% of the units, as Mr. Rosanova pointed out clearly, um, because he has that control and he maintains the control over the architectural design and rules. So not only did unfortunately the village not make things more clear, I think, at the beginning, uh, when he started the co- the, the subdivision, in the declarations and the bylaws for the homeowners' association, he purposely wrote it extremely one-sided. And as homeowners, even as the first homeowners in, you have no right to change those. He only changed, turned over the homeowners' association 10 years in because that was written into the bylaws. He had to by law. So, I, you know, I think we feel very hamstrung. I, obviously, I hear everybody here that's saying that we're all hand-tied. I, I guess, as MNI is the builder, I'm just asking you guys to think this through a little bit more, try to just make, make a few more concessions. You made one concession, really, and that's just about the, the minimum home sizes next to one and two. Everything else is options. It's, we might, we could, we'll try to upsell it. Um, you know, I think we just need to make sure we, we keep that in, we keep that in mind with everything that we have going on here.
Very good. Thank you very much, Brian.
Dale, we do have one more.
You clarified something on the HOA. I think that's, I think uh, everybody's looking for somebody else to solve the problems, you know? It, it doesn't work that way. Okay, what else, David?
Uh, Rebecca Hernandez wishes to speak. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute.
New and unusual to say. Later on.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate your time. I wanted to correct Mr. Drendel, who spoke that villages, cities do not set no less than wording in your ordinances. If you look right next door at our city Aurora, in their estate 7.4, the ordinance reads that no family dwelling be less than 3,500 square feet. So he was very adamant that that wording is not used, and yet right next door, we have that with Aurora. So clearly it is used. And I wanted to make sure that correction was.
Not used in our.
No, he said that it's not a common language in cities or villages. So I wanted to make that correction, that it's so common that it's right next door.
It wasn't in 2003.
Um, that's, if you look, it's, it's Aurora's current ordinance, it's 7.4. So just wanted to make sure that that correction was noted. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Steve?
So I'm just looking for direction from the board on whether to move this forward or bring it back to a town meeting.
Well, I think you got to draw your conclusions from the, the comments from the six board members.
Okay.
I was in favor. I was in favor.
I will bring this forward to the board for the next agenda on the 21st.
Very good. Anything else? Anyone?
Uh, no Dale. I do not see anyone else, Mr. Berman.
Very good. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Where's Jaren? Thank you much. It was a good evening and a lot of good discussion.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.